All right, it looks like we are recording. So, good evening, everyone. This is the December 29, 2020 meeting, special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Tonight, it is staffed by John Reiner and Deb Jones of the Planning and Development Office. Paige Bronk from Economic Development is also here. The Commission Chair is Jeffrey Pritchard. The public can address the Commission during public participation portion of the agenda. To be recognized, you need to raise your virtual hand. So if you're on an Apple product, the hand is found by hovering over the top of your screen. On a PC, it's found by hovering at the bottom. And if you're calling into the meeting by phone, you need to press star nine to raise your hand.
So I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission Special Meeting to order. First item is our roll call. It looks like everybody is online except for Kevin Fitton. Next, and you have the staff recorded, right? And Public Communications is the next item. Does anyone on the Commission have any communications to identify the staff? Does anyone in the public wish to address the Commission tonight? Because this is the only time that the public can discuss anything with the Commission or make a presentation.
Again, you need to raise your virtual hand. So I am seeing one member of the public who is interested in speaking, so I'm going to allow him to talk.
Good evening. This is Scott Westervelt at Seven Boulder Court here in Mystic. I'm calling with regards to the, on the agenda, the plan sheets that we saw. This is, and maybe I haven't seen everything going through, but project has morphed into something so much larger than it started. And it's according to those drawings that we saw today, is nowhere near the quaint village that Mr. Rasppler and Mr. Reiner said we were going to get. Having an eight-story garage slash residence hall behind our homes, and then another five-story residence hall behind our homes, right, right up the top of the hill, there, there's nothing quaint about that for those of us that live below it. One question I had, I believe there was 150, and I sent these, I don't know if you got my comments or not, but there was going to be 150-foot buffer between the property line for the residents on Boulder Court and Oral School up to the buildings. Does the new perimeter road, which just magically appeared, is that going to be behind that 150, or is that going to be on the edge of it? And is, you know, what are the plans for that? That road because of the salt runoff and everything else? We all live on wells down here. We don't have any city water. Everything comes through our groundwater, which I would imagine the development, every, everything up there is going to have an effect on that. So briefly, those are a couple of my questions, though I do have more.
Thank you. We have Matthew Richardson.
Yes, thank you. I'm actually a neighbor of Scott Westervelt. I live at 21 Boulder Court. And I have a lot of the same concerns, but I also have some additional ones. One of the new things that I saw on the plan was the fact that they want to run a perimeter road all the way around. I think Scott already mentioned that. And I, just looking at the contour maps based off of where those roads are, how much blasting was going to need to be done to build those public roads, these public roads? And one of the other major questions that I had, because I sent them to Rasppler Homes, because they had a section on their webpage that specifically said, if you have questions on this, ask them and we'll get back to you. I've asked several times on, for questions on studies that have been done for environmental impacts, traffic studies, sewer studies, and also where they're getting from this local community that an additional 1,500 people would be interested in moving.
Deb, you're muted?
Yep, thank you. All right, we have one other person with their hand raised. It looks like Mike Whitney.
I, I was, did we lose Mr. Richardson in the end?
I'm not sure.
It sounded like he's, you know, stopped communicating.
I heard environmental sewer studies, 1,500, and I wrote that down, and that was all that I heard.
Oh, no, that's pretty much all of what I had right there. I was just wondering.
I just wanted to make sure I heard the entirety of it. Thank you.
The, the final thing I was wondering about was the, the study in this area that seemed like they'd had enough people that actually wanted to move in there in that price range, because I haven't seen those studies, and I've asked and no one got back to me.
All right, thank you kindly.
Thank you.
So we had one other person.
Yes, I'm going to have to promote him to a panelist, because it appears he's using an older version of Zoom. So I'll do that, and then I'll put him back to an attendee once he's done.
Okay.
I'm guessing that's for me. One of the other things, I remember at the last meeting that I attended from the Zoom, they were, people seemed to be up in arms about the height of the buildings that were going in down in downtown Mystic. And I'm just, I'm curious what the zoning requirements are for a building of that size in our area, if they're going to have to be variances, because we're looking at, if it's eight stories, probably 100, 100-plus feet. Just want to make sure that, you know, what kind of variance is going to have to be done to accommodate that.
Thank you. Mike Whitney, I believe, also had his hand raised. We, yeah, we cannot hear you. Nope. Can't hear you. For those who can't participate, you can always email staff, and we can, we will absolutely get your comments to the Commission. It looks like I have another person, Harold Brown.
Yep, that's me. I live on Seven Hancock Drive, so I'm, I'm not quite where Boulder Court is, but I'm around the corner. And I guess the two comments that I had, one related to before the pandemic hit, there was a meeting over at a school around the corner from here. In my sense, at that presentation was, is that there was almost a promise that no buildings that they were planning on putting up were going to be any taller than the buildings that already existed there. I remember walking away feeling, well, that's not too bad, you know, if you're, because if you stand on River Road and you look up, if you take the capola and the smokestack off of the top of the building, you can barely see the top of the roof line of the main, of the main building at the school, Oral School. And I felt like, okay, that would be all right. And, and if there's enough setback, then the people down on Boulder Court won't be looked down on, you know, sort of like something hanging over their heads. And when you hear about an eight-story building and four stories are going to be parking garage, I doubt it's going to be four stories underground of parking garage and four stories of building, which would probably be just about the top of the Oral School. So I'm getting a little, I'm, I'm a little nervous that this plan is getting bigger and taller and taller to offer great penthouse views looking down at the seaport and the bridge down, down, you know, down the road, which means Boulder Court is just going to be like looking down on everybody's houses. And I don't think that's the, the, the presentation that I remember hearing back in the day. And the other comment that I had had to do with traffic. Someone a couple of Zoom meetings ago made a comment about, what, what do you guys really do with a traffic study? And, and somebody mentioned like 14 or 1,500 people, and that's kind of what I thought, looking at 931 places with so many bedrooms. And if you ever worked at EB back in the day, there's a, there's a parking lot on Rainville. And if you ever came out at four o'clock to try and get out of there, that's kind of my vision of how the traffic's going to flow in and out of there. If you have, say, 1,200 cars or 1,300 cars trying to get out in the morning. And I know people can debate about whether everybody's going to be working from home from now on and all that, but a lot of EB people and a lot of Pfizer people, I'm sure, are going to have to go to work. And if you have, again, my, my thought was 1,400 cars trying to leave there all within a couple of hours, it's going to be a real zoo. And I don't think the way they've got it laid out, two roads are going to really take, take all that traffic. And just one other comment, if you try and go by where the school is on, on, on Oral School Road, where the, where one of the roads is going to come out, and you're trying to get buses in and out of there, it's a zoo already. And I just wanted to follow up with that, because I think someone already kind of had an opinion about whether that, whether that road was going to be able to handle all the traffic coming out. So think about it as 12 or 13, or maybe 1,400 cars trying to get out of that road in the morning. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep. Penelope Miller.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Well, I live on 56 Hancock Drive. And I would like to address the part of the proposal that concerns the former Ferguleski property, that six, roughly 16-acre parcel on the west side of Oral School Road. That's, that property is where the access road is proposed for. And this property is currently zoned RU20, and as are all of the three surrounding neighborhoods. And this is designed for, according to the, the town's zoning regulations, is designed for one and two-unit dwellings in suburban settings with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. And now the developer is proposing to put not only the access road there, but 31 buildings containing 71 two- and three-bedroom units. And I just think that the number and density of housing would represent a huge change in the character of, of our neighborhoods. And we, I, I just strenuously object to changing the zoning of this parcel to allow this, that kind of a development there. I assume the zoning would have to be changed to allow for multifamily homes there.
Is there any other?
Yep, it looks like Mike Whitney. Say it again?
Okay, I think I'm good now.
Yes, you are.
Great, thank you. So I sent a letter yesterday to the Commission, but I'll, I'll just read that right now. I have questions concerning the Mystic River Bluffs project that I'd like you to raise at this special meeting or subsequent meetings as appropriate. There are four of them. First, how many school-aged children are anticipated to reside in the development when completed? I've asked this question before, but received nothing more specific than low as an answer from the Planning Department. The project information chart has 931 units, including 469 multi-bedroom units. Seems to me that hundreds of children could live in this development. It'd be well advised to have estimates early so that the school system can plan ahead. The second question's already been talked about, is what are the heights in feet above ground for each building in the project? I don't see this information in the agenda package. I am troubled by the 120-feet maximum height presented as part of the zoning pre-application workshop on November 17th. Please also ask if the existing landmark cupula with weather vane will still be able to be seen from the Mystic River when the project is complete. Maintaining this vista is important. Third question is, already been talked about too, is will the RU20 zoning requirements be met on the non-state land involved in this project? My sense from an earlier playing zoning commission meeting is the answer is no. The Mystic River Bus Plan does look like it has lower density of development in these parts than on the state land, but it still looks more built up than RU20 would allow. Overall, I believe any proposed zoning changes in the areas not part of the original Mystic Education Center RFP should be carefully scrutinized and strongly justified. And the fourth and final question, what are the town and state planning to do to improve infrastructure in the surrounding area to support this project and larger community? One of my experiences, traffic increases on town-state roads, as has been mentioned. Another concern is pedestrian and bicyclist connectivity to downtown Mystic. The sidewalks, at very least, should be connected to provide safe pass all the way down to downtown Mystic and northward to Route 184. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see, I see Becca has her hand up.
Hello, I'm also someone from Boulder Court, 32 Boulder Court, and I share the concerns that have been
Could you say your name, please?
Rebecca Welch. My name is Rebecca Welch. At 32 Boulder Court. I share the concerns of my neighbors regarding the density, regarding the traffic, and particularly regarding the infrastructure. If you have ever walked down Cow Hill Road, you come off Oral School onto Cow Hill in the summertime, and you have smelled the smell from the storm drains, I have grave concerns about the sewer capacity for that many units in that space. Boulder Court does not have city water. We have wells, as was mentioned. But I wonder if a study has been done to determine that the sewer capacity can handle that many people, because quite frankly, the way things smell down there in the summers, it doesn't seem like they're keeping up now. So I would appreciate it if that could be addressed now or in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands being raised.
All right, then.
Can, can we, can I ask Becca a question?
Go ahead.
Specifically, I'd like to know what, what she's talking about with the sewers that she smells. Are they storm drains or?
So when you, when you walk down Oral School Road, coming from Boulder Court, and you walk down and you, you meet up with Cow Hill, you know where the, in between the highway bridges and the dentist's office? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I know the area.
There's a very bad smell there frequently in the summers, and I reported it to the town once. I don't know if I reported it to the correct person or not. But I, I don't know what's causing it, and given that it's a sewer-y kind of smell, I, I am worried that putting 1,500 people with lots of toilets flushing is going to make that sort of thing worse. It's possible that I simply don't understand infrastructure, but either way, that is an issue I would like addressed.
Thank you. We'll get that to public work. Almost sounds like it's a failing septic system, but we will, we'll get that concerned, public works.
Thank you.
I have one more hand before we move on. Faith Richardson.
We did bring it up.
Oh, it says Scott's talking. Okay, here I am. Yeah, so I am Faith Richardson. I sent you guys a letter, which I'm sure you've all received by now. So thank you for reading that. I live at 21 Boulder Court, and I just wanted to add on to what Becca was saying. It does stink like poo in that area. Also, if you continue, so if you come off of Oral School and you take a, come off Boulder Court onto Oral School and then take a right and go up past the dentist's office to the intersection where Ledgeland, Cow Hill, and whatever that road is called at that particular point, Allen Street, Mystic Street, I'm not sure which of the five names on that road is the ro, the right one there, also stinks horrifically all the time in the summer. I mean, it's, it's bad. It's really bad. Anyone who's walked by there, I think, can attest to that as well. And as well, I have all of the same concerns that everyone else has had. This is obviously very much going to directly impact myself, my family, our neighborhood. I'm just wondering what kind of recourse we will have when property damage happens, you know, with the, the blasting that's going to have to happen. I mean, it's literally named Boulder Court for a reason. There will be blasting, especially if a great part of it is underground. I just have serious concerns for my well, and we, we don't have septic, we don't have city water, and that doesn't seem to be an option. Our foundation, you know, may shift. I just really fear for my house and our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we have Bob Sullivan. Has his hand up?
Yes, Robert Sullivan, 70 Oral School Road. On a smell, that is coming from the Fieldcrest Estate area, coming across. The state or town have been in that area with blockage of lines, and that's why it smells at the end of Oral School Road and Cow Hill Road and the I-95 Bridge areas.
Thank you.
We're doing public works tonight.
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, then we can move on to new business, which is the presentation tonight. I don't know who's gonna, Steph or John going?
Jeff, Jeff, should we note for the record the communications that we did receive through the, through email? Should we note who they were from?
We can add them to the
I think it should be Yeah, I think it should be in the record.
On the record, right?
Because they, they have been attached to the agenda packet that's online.
Right.
But they would be part of the record then of the meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure they were.
So we can move on then to, to the presentation of the draft master plan. And we're not going to take any action tonight. It's just for information.
Correct. So, good evening, everybody. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So, you know, I just want to reiterate a few things and mention a couple items. Tonight, the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to hear a presentation of a master plan for the redevelopment of the Mystic Education Center. This is a vision for the property that is very preliminary. We wanted to give a little overview and context for the Commission before we hand the presentation over to the Rasppler Homes team of Jeff Rasppler and Ray Cannon. Before I begin, I want to be clear, there are no applications for the redevelopment of the Mystic Ed Center at this time. We don't have an active application. I cannot stress that enough. Today, the property is still owned by the state of Connecticut. This property is currently not on the tax roll and is paying no taxes to the town. The town took the lead on marketing this property from funding through a state brownfield grant a number of years ago. The Rasppler Homes was chosen as the preferred developer and has been negotiating with the state for the past few years to buy the property. A public meeting was held to unveil the master plan. It should also be mentioned that this is now called Mystic River Bluffs and has a dedicated website, which is maintained by Rasppler Homes. This property in its current state is a huge liability from a safety and environmental standpoint. It is degrading every day from a mold and building maintenance standpoint, and has, has become a major liability and hazard that the buildings are constantly being broken into. It should be noted that Rasppler Homes now has a monitoring system on the, on the property, and the Groton Police have made a lot of arrests out there due to some of the break-ins. The Planning and Zoning Commission has been working on a zoning regulation amendment that will lay out a permitting path for the redevelopment of the Mystic Education Center. Last month, the Commission walked the property to better understand the land, the existing buildings and surrounding neighborhood. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to hear a presentation of a preliminary draft of a master plan for the redevelopment to help the Commission visualize what their zoning regulation may allow. The zoning regulation text amendment, which has not been adopted yet, will lay out a permitting path for the redevelopment of the Mystic Education Center. Again, there are no applications involving the redevelopment of the Mystic Education Center right now. There's no active applications. All, all applications will be heard at a public hearing, and the regulations themselves get into that permitting path. So moving that forward is the first step, and then the applicant would make application after that. So we've been working with Rasppler Homes for a few years, Deb Jones, myself, and Paige Bronk, and we wanted to hand it over to Jeff Rasppler at this time, again, to present his vision for the property to the Commission. And please, you know, ask questions through so that you can get a better understanding of the site. And with that, Jeff, I'll hand it over to you. If you want to just unmute yourself there. And Deb, I think we gave Jeff permission to share a screen, correct?
That's right. He's a panelist. He can be able to share a screen.
Okay, good. So Jeff, it's all yours.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you, John, Paige, Deb, and especially the Commission for allowing me to present the vision that we've been working on for the last couple of years. Just to take you back to the beginning, I, you know, believe it or not, the first time that I saw this property was December of 2016. So it's going on to four years now that we've been working with the town and coming up with a concept plan for the Oral School property called Mystic River Bluffs. In December 2016, I met, I went out there and I walked that property and as the Commission did the other day, and I spent four hours there trying, you know, and my original thoughts were that that building, you know, is ripe for some historical tax credits, or, you know, turn it into some sort of rental property and take advantage of the historical tax credits like they did with mill building, mill buildings around Connecticut. But as I, you know, as I was walking around that building, you know, it's just, it's a narrow building in a lot of points. It wasn't designed as a regular school. It was designed as, you know, a school for the deaf with much smaller classrooms. And there's a lot of areas where it does open up that just, you know, it juts in, it juts out. There's just no uniformity to that building. And I was just trying to figure out how to make that building work. As a matter of fact, I went back there in February of 2017 to do additional walkthrough, because, listen, it's a beautiful piece of property. It's in Mystic overlooking the river. And, you know, I was trying to figure out a way in which, you know, it could be economically viable, even with the historical tax credits, but I came out even the second time with, with fresh ideas that this prop, pretty, you're taking a square peg and trying to force it into a round hole. You wouldn't have uniform hallways. There would be, there would be tremendous compromises in trying to work this into some sort of a, you know, usable building related to, you know, rental. From there, I said, what kind of other uses could be used for this property? And the state, I know from when I, when I met them, and I met Paige the first time there, the state has been trying to market the property for like six years before that. And, you know, that, that was the same, I guess, conclusion at the end, that it was just, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't viable for that type of entity. But we spoke to the town and trying to get an idea of what the needs are of the community and of the town itself. And they were telling me that in Groton, they have a different problem than other towns would have. Other towns have an employment problem, but not, you know, not, you know, a residential problem. And it seems like here, a lot of people work for these different, you know, large business entities in the town like EB, Pfizer, et cetera, and what they do, 75 to 80% of them, you know, after they finish work, they just leave the town. The money goes with them. None of the, they don't get any of the economic benefit with money being spent in the town, being spent in the town stores to be able to build the town up economically to become a wealthier and stronger town. That was interesting, that most of the people actually don't live in Groton. We went out and we actually got a meeting with EB. And we spoke to them, and, you know, their concerns were You know, their concerns were that they can't retain some of the top talent because. They have nowhere in which they wanna live, the Gen Zers, millennials. Coming out today, whether they're more spoiled than we were in our days, or they're looking for more of a life than we were. Um, you know, there, there, there's nothing around the town to give them that. Um, they're saying that some people are going as far as Old Saybrook to live, uh, for some life and others are traveling in from Hartford, et cetera. So. Their, their, their problem was is that they couldn't retain the qua- the quality employees because they'd rather go and work in Hartford, white travel an hour every single day. Um, there was nothing for them for the Gen Zers and millennials lifestyle in southeastern Connecticut. Um, we spoke to Pfizer, who had a similar. You know, concern, um. So we took that under advisement and we tried to say, well, how can we, how can we work with the business entities and how can we work with the issues that the town is having? And how can we bring this property back to life? And I tell you, I, I couldn't figure it out until one night. When I was gonna sleep, you know, I was thinking about the property and something just, you know, I guess popped into my head and this was where the vision really came together. I was looking at the Oral School in the wrong way. I was looking at it as trying to fit into some sort of rental housing. But the Oral School, as I said, wasn't really designed for that, but. What if we make the Oral School like Main Street USA? Why don't we make that the main? Commercial hub of a village? And then work around. You know, the main street multifamily housing. Well, that will do is. With, there would be a synergistic and a symbiotic relationship between. The stores and and the, the commercial and the town itself. Um, what would be in there? And I started thinking, well, you know, it'd be great to have, you know, some sort of a restaurant. You know, bar, pub type of setup. Um, and then I was thinking, you know, the cafeteria, that's a perfect place for that to set up and right below the cafeteria. You know, it was a great place to have a bar or nightish type of area, uh, down there and there's a courtyard. Um, right next to it, there could be an outdoor type of cafe. This could be a real destination point over here. Um, what else? Well, you know, we can make inside the Oral School some sort of organic market on the main level. You know, five thousand some odd square feet. Not meant to replace a stop and shop, but certainly meant to. You know, someone comes home from work, they need bread, they need milk, they need, you know, fruits, vegetables, this, that, whatever, you know. That could work. You know what? These spaces are, are, are able to be brought into non-uniform space, so it's, it's not an issue. Uh, well, what else could be done in this building? Well, you know, we can, we can make the first floors sort of like this commercial entity. We can make. You know, a UPS store in there. There's a lot of packages that can come into the village. I know it's always huge, huge problem, packages are left all over the place as they're delivered. There could be some sort of a center for that. Um, there could be a great coffee shop in there, more of a boutique type of coffee shop. Be able to grab coffees, you know, on their way to work. And, you know, above this, um, first floor, we can create, you know, modern type of office space that's needed right now. Again, office space. Doesn't fit into a rigid structure. Um, you know, especially the, as we work now, which is very popular, and that might even be able to be fed from the village itself. Um, where, you know, you, you get a cubicle or or an office and you share secretaries, you share conference rooms. Um, sort of, you know, what is going on today is seems to be a big shift to that. There's also, we thought, maybe up there more of a flex collaboration space, um, up there. Uh, and regular office space for the rest of the building. So wait, we can really make this building viable. But in order for that to happen, um, you need to have some sort of a critical mass and we need to, we need, we need to be able to create the community. Around it that's gonna support the building and the building itself support the community. And that's where this whole symbiotic relationship came from. And then, you know, we thought further and said, you know, this really works because. The Pratt Building was a beautiful building. That's a recreation building. And, you know, it needs a lot of work to bring it back up, but that's a really. Beautiful sports facility and, um. You know, I didn't know what to do with that building before because there's, you know, you're gonna build, you know, thirty, forty apartments. There's no. You know, the building is way too big, but now it makes a little bit more sense. So we have some critical mass here. You know, maybe we can talk to the town and see if they have an interest in, in. Maybe using that building a little bit, we using the building a little bit. And then I found out that, you know, we're talking to the town that, well, parks and recreation did use that building before. And they might be willing to use it again. Um, so I said, wow, so now it's forty thousand square feet. We can, we can use it on the development, the town can use it. Another symbiotic relationship because as people come in to use that building, they're gonna wanna maybe hang out at the, you know, the restaurant. They might wanna, you know, hang out with the different entities that are inside the building, get some coffee, hang out at the cafe, uh, which will again strengthen the community. So. This just popped into my head. At the same time, um, the town was telling me they finally worked things out with the state because we originally were dealing with the state. That they were gonna put out an RFP for the project. Um, and. The beauty of it is this, there was gonna be representative, representatives from the town as well as the state. Um, so that everyone will work in concert to figure out the best way to bring this property back to life. Um, this was, uh, this concept in my head, uh, was. Developed after my second, so it was somewhere in March, April of two thousand seventeen. The town said by the summer, they're gonna be coming out with the, the state really. So by the summer, they're gonna come out with the RFP. Um, and of course, you know, dealing with the state, things got delayed until, um, the end of that year. I think it came out in December. Um, at that time, I wanted to make sure that the concept and the idea that I was floating over here. Um, was gonna work. More importantly. This solved Pfizer's problem, this solved EB's problem, this solved the, the town's problem. Because now we're able to bring the economic powerhouse back into the town. We're able to now satisfy, you know, EB, that these people, when they come out of work, Gen Z and millennials, if you ever went to Hartford or New York or. You know, they come downstairs and they do hang out at the pubs. They socialize for an hour, an hour and a half after work. They meet their friends, they, they, they meet, you know, the opposite, you know, the girls and the guys and, you know, they all talk and they have a good time for like an hour and a half de-stressing. That will all work with the restaurant, that will all work with the club and the outdoor cafe and it'll be a great place for them to meet, but more, more importantly. It makes it a destination point. It's not just a shelter for these people, which is what they don't want. They want a life. What are they gonna do afterwards? Well, after spending an hour, an hour and a half, you know, de-stressing, let's go work out. You know, let's go to the gym. Let's go to, let's go to Olympic pool and do a serious workout. Let's go, you know, shoot some hoops. Let's go weight lift. You know, even bowling is coming back into vogue right now and there's a bowling alley in there and racquetball. So, you know, that, that gives them activity. Not only that, but the way the pop- property is situated. You know, grab a kayak or canoe, throw it on your shoulder and let's walk down the path to the water and launch and, uh. You know, row and and get some upper body workout. Uh, it's just perfect for their type of lifestyle. They have so much to do over there. Um, so it's all their problem. It's all the problem with what to do with the Pratt Building and it's all the problem what to do with the Oral School. How do I put this all together? How do I get this idea to work? Will it work? Is, is the property amenable to something like this? Um, so before the December RFP, we hired Fussin O'Neil, uh, Chris Ferrer is one of the principals and they're. They are one of, they are the largest, I think, engineering company out in, uh, or at least one of the largest in, uh, in Connecticut. Um, it was important to use them because they had a lot of public-private partnership. Um, they've done a lot of projects. Um, they are familiar with a project like this. Um, at the same time, we hired a company called Crosskey Architects. And, um, they work hand in hand, but they also have tremendous knowledge with, you know, these older buildings of how to rehabilitate them. And the Oral School, as you can see. You know, was a handful and how to bring that back to life. So, um, we thought it was really important for us to bring Crosskey Architects. As we develop this, and let me see if I can. Share my screen. Are we good? Do you see my screen?
Yeah, no, yes.
Yes, okay. So, um, this is the property itself. Um, it's this, this brown building is the Oral School property, just to give you a, a frame of reference. The river is to the right, uh, interstate ninety-five is below, uh, Boulder Court. Um, and to the left is, uh, Cow Hill Road, just to give you an idea. Um, but, uh, this wasn't the picture I was gonna show you. Um, I was gonna go to the graphics that we created for, um, this property. This was included in our RFP. This was our original design that were created for this property. And what it did was it gave us the ability, and I hope you can see my cursor, um, to come in through, uh, Oral School Road. That's the road. Uh-huh, the state road that's used for this property. And as you come down, um, we built, this is, um, the Mystic Oral School. This D is the Pratt Building over here. So you're able to come down. Through the, and then go into the, all these are, uh, buildings that were designed with, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this plan because this was our original plan. Um, and there's a reason why this plan was changed, as some people mentioned, but, um, that was changed because of our community outreach. Um, but this was our original idea to come in, create this community that will feed into this building and this building feed back into the community. In a symbiotic, uh, synergistic relationship. Um, it was designed to be green. Um, as you see, it's, you're not looking at parking fields of cars. Um, underneath all these bill, most of these buildings, not all, are underground parking, uh, as the first level. Um. You know, some of these are walk-ups and th- these were designed as walk-ups because there are homes down here and these are only three-story buildings. As compared to these to be four stories over podium parking. So we tried to, you know, step up and and bring the height of the building down some of the corners. Um. But what this allowed is for cars, and they were also created as part of this plan originally, the F Building over here. And this building is, um, a parking garage. So we thought that people from the town, after we said there will be uses for. The Pratt Building from the town and from the Oral School businesses, we decided to create a parking garage over here as part of this village. And cars will come in off Oral School Road, they come into the parking garage, then the families will either walk over to the Pratt Building. And, you know, enjoy that building and then maybe come back to, uh, hang out. This, this area over here, by the way, is the outdoor courtyard. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but it's right between, uh, what was the old cafeteria, which would be, you know, more of a restaurant now. And, um, and this is the Boys Wing, uh, what's called the Boys Wing, which was an extension added in, in the forties. Uh, so there's like a little alcove here, which is a perfect place to have a little bit of an outdoor cafe. Uh, we thought in this cafe. You know, during the spring, summer, fall. You could have local bands playing there. You know what? People are sitting. We could have, you know, a jazz night, you could have a. Soft rock night, you can have classical music, you can have, you know, karaoke, you can have anything out there. And I thought that would be a great drawer and underneath this building would be the bar type of restaurant I spoke about. Um, so this was the original vision that we had for the project. Uh, you know, we have a rendering. I could just show you the relationship between, um, you know, the buildings that are gonna be, you know, the multifamily and. The Oral School. There was gonna be a huge, um, outdoor green over here. It's another area. Um, showed you on the drawing, it's right over here. Um, and that was gonna be designed for, you know, a farmers market one day, maybe an art show. Um, it could even be used for a different type of town events, this big open village green. And, um, so that was that area. Plus, as you can see, this roadway leads to the Pratt Building. Um, and, uh, for the, so that you'd park over here and you'd roll down to the Pratt Building. Um, we submitted this in December of two thousand seventeen. Um. Uh, in, in February two thousand eighteen, I should say that it was, it came out in December two thousand seventeen. It was, um. Uh, collected and closed off by the town in February two thousand eighteen. Um, and it wasn't until September of two thousand eighteen, like six months later. That the town actually started the first round of interviews and we were pretty excited to be included in the first round. The town then in January had a second round of interviews were included in that and finally in March, um, we were chosen as the preferred developer of this property. Many of the reasons why we were chosen was because of. We hit the needs of the communities and we hit the, you know, the issues that are associated with the town. Um, and all the money leaving and not being able to spend, I mean, people are gonna spend money here, but now they're gonna go to. The dry cleaners, they're gonna go to the stop and shops, they're gonna go to other restaurants, they're gonna support. The different entities that are in the town to make them stronger and, um, so, and we handled. A lot of problems with local labor because people would want to finally come here and make this, this is more of a destination point. This is not a place, just a shelter. Um, but it's a life that you could have. After you finish working out even, you can go back to the restaurant and, and, you know, you don't have to sit in your home. Um, and that's the difference between a development like this and a lot of others. Um. We chosen, I told you in March of two thousand nineteen as the preferred developer, uh, we hired a company called Pullman and Conley, a law firm. Um, well-respected, well-known within the state, also done tremendous amount of public-private partnership, um, to work with the state. Uh, to put us in the contract, uh, to purchase the property based upon preferred developer of the RFP. Uh, we accomplished that in November two thousand nineteen. So once we had control of the property, we actually had a rollout with the town, um, and town hall and presented, uh, the plan. Uh, and we started what's called the public outreach, um, from December two thousand nineteen till March of two thousand twenty, till basically when COVID hit. Um, you know, we met with conservation groups and, um. You know, their concern was, well, what are you doing on this mountainside? And you're leaving it pretty pristine? Are you gonna start, you know, destroying the views from Mystic? And our answer was, you know, we, we have a plan to give it back to deep, it's gonna go under, uh. Conservation protection that no one could build on that piece of land. Um, you know, they were pretty happy with that. Um, we met with the local RTM group, um, and we also. You know, they, they suggested that we set up a meeting with the entire, um, local area and they set, and they set up a, you know, presentation for us in the Northeast. Uh, Academy School. Um. And, you know, the themes that were coming out, you know, we had others too. We had brunches with local residents, uh, we had one-on-one meetings. Again, everything stopped when COVID hit, um, because it just wasn't, you know, viable a- at that point in time. Um, but the theme, you know. Listen, th- there's a small vocal group, um. That, you know, they approached me and said, well, why can't this stay as. You know, one person, which is an extreme example, wants it as a dog park. But, you know, others said, you know, why can't you make this into a recreation? Why can we have tennis courts? And that would be up to the town, you know, parks and rec. Uh, and use it more as a, as a park. Um, or, you know, if you're gonna build homes, do ten or twenty homes here, or, you know, if you had to do apartments, do a hundred apartments. The answer is, is that, yes. We could do that and we could build a hundred apartments here, but then it's gonna be like all the other apartments in the area. There will be no Oral School because it, there won't be an economic vitality here to support it. Um, the Pratt Building, there's no way to put that building together. It's eight or ten million dollars. And it would be way too big for a hundred apartments. So how is that gonna work? And I don't think, you know, the towns. Wanna come up with that money to try to put that building back together, but it would be a great asset, you know, if it was in use. Um. So, yeah, it could be done and and it could be viable, but. You won't solve the town's problems, maybe slightly because money will be spent here, but certainly you won't be solving some of the biggest employers' problems, uh, in the area. Because there would be no nightlife here. There would be nothing to draw them besides shelter like some of the other buildings that are going up in the neighborhood. Um, but then there are other things that we could address. Um, now there's concern, as you heard tonight, there was a lot of concern about traffic. Um, there was concern that people used some of this building, you know, some of the area was used as jogging trails and running tracks and. Now we're gonna have cars going on these roads and what happens then? Um, there was talk that, well, you know, the intersection where we're gonna be using, uh, for Oral School Road. Um, doesn't really line up with Lampier and with Cow Hill, and that's gonna cause a problem. Uh, what, what are you gonna do about that? Um, you know, the sewer capacity, as you heard, um, safety, schools, as you heard, uh, parking, what is gonna? Um, people lower Oral School Road were saying, you know, you're gonna have traffic running through our neighborhood. This is gonna be, you know, crazy what's going on over here. Um, so we took all that in, into guidance and we said, well, how can we make this project even better? Um, so. Even though COVID hit, um, in late February, didn't it yet, we got the developers agreement from the town, so we went back to the drawing board to try to see. How we can improve this plan even further. Um, and during COVID, we were busy working. Um. Took us three months or so until August two thousand twenty. took us three months or so until August two thousand twenty, where we changed the plan. Lots of things have changed here, and this is the plan that I want to present to you tonight, and just, you know, everything up to now was really an evolution as to where we got here. Um, what happened in Oral School Road, as you see right now, and if you can see with my, my cursors, I'm, I'm assuming you can see everything I'm doing. And please tell me, uh, if not. As you can see, Lampier Road is here, Oral School Road is here, um, Cowhill Road is here, Oral School Road is up here, it doesn't line up at that intersection. So how do I solve that traffic problem? Also, how do I make this lanes wider so there could be turning lanes over here? So there wouldn't be traffic backed up um along Oral School Road? So what we did is we bought this piece of property, three eighty-two, three ninety Oral School Road. The reason why we bought it, there's a beautiful Adams House on it, we intend to keep it, it's, it's built in the seventeen hundreds, it's gorgeous. Uh, but what we wanted is take land a little bit away from the property so that we can properly, you know, handle one of the major problems of traffic and line up this intersection. Um, and give turning lanes, so that, you know, there'll be ten, twelve cars that are in their turning lane, which will free up the road and get better access to the community. Okay, what else can we do um regarding traffic? To handle these issues, well, people were complaining that um from, and I'm going to jump back and forth, so please tell me if um the computers aren't keeping up. Um, here is I ninety-five, as you see down here, uh the bottom of the screen. Um, this is the south of the property. Um, you're coming off the exit pretty much over here, and you're coming up Cowhill Road. Right now, we're coming straight up Cowhill, all the way to the intersection of Cowhill and Oral, to come into the property. Uh, there were, there was, you know, communities over here, the Mystic Islands and others that, um, you know, they felt that this road is going to get congested. How can we, you know, not congest up the local roads in the neighborhood? So we started thinking, um, there was a property next door called the Ferguleski Property, which was seventeen acres of land. Um, and why, what's so great about that property? Well, you know, that goes all the way to Cowhill Road. So what we can do is we can create a new entrance. And by creating this new entrance, we're really stopping most of the traffic, there's not much going on right over here, we're around the block and a half from, um, you know, uh, uh, the, the Ferguleski Property. So we could actually just come up and shoot right into the development, which will bypass a lot of the local traffic in the community. So what we did was we purchased that property. Uh, what that gives us now is another road in and out of the community. A road that's closer to the I ninety-five, so that it, we're bypassing a lot of the traffic in the neighborhood. And we're coming straight into this new road and coming straight into our development. Well, what else can we do to, to create the plan? Well, you know, there was talk that the, the, in our original design, we had the parking garage um far away from the Pratt Building. If the intention is to be able to service the Pratt Building, then, you know, people might not want to walk out in the cold and go so far back and forth, so what could be done about that? So we said, you know what? As we create this new road, maybe we should not take, uh, in the old plan, we were taking traffic all through the community. And we said, maybe we should make as a better idea, create a ring road that basically runs the circumference of the property in and out. So there's, basically makes this more urban, it also gives a more efficient way for traffic to flow straight into the new parking garage over here. And this way they can come right out and just walk, you know, hundred feet, and they're inside the Pratt Building, as well as walk the other way, as you see the, and walk right into the Oral School, in case they want to use the restaurant, so the, the pub, or whatever else they want to use inside the building. So we created and we moved um the, the parking garage to better facilitate um the flow of traffic as cars come in. They just jump right in here, they don't have to go back and forth and zigzag, and they're right next to the, the Pratt Building. Um, well, you know, there was concern about, um, you know, having some sort of um bike paths or walking paths or jogging paths, so that it shouldn't, you know, right now, the people were jogging on the main roads, well, what kind of safety features can you do with that? So we widened um the entire road going up, where now these roads are, are all two-lane, plus there's five foot of bike paths on either side of the road, plus six foot of the concrete path for walking, jogging, et cetera, that runs around the entire community. Um, how did we do that? So what we did was we created, the blue is, is, you know, for cars, and this is where the, the parking garage is. But the yellow is bike paths and jogging paths. So when you come in from either end of Oral School, there will be a path for you to jog on next to the road, um, and come straight down into um the intersecting Oral School Road that's existing right now. And from here, you can jog out to the Pratt Building, and you can go us from there, you know, and I'm jumping and I hope it's okay. Uh, if you're following, the roads following up in here, but now we're going to have an easement that we, that we, the state has agreed to, it allows to come through and make a walking trail or a jogging trail or a bike path down to River Road, so they can actually loop all the way around. Uh, so local residents from, not even so much from the village, but from surrounding can have a jogging, running path that run around in a complete circle. But it also allows us for River Road, uh, one mile from River Road in our development is downtown Mystic. So um, if people wanted to take from our community or others, as they come around, they can jump onto a bike and you have four minutes from Mystic. Um, you want to walk, you have fifteen minutes, we gave that, you know, intersection to come down to allow that to happen. Uh, so that was part of the idea, um, that we created this new, um, sorry, these new roads. Um, it added to the safety. Um, I have Ray Kehron, who's a financial, a real estate financial economist, he'll talk about schools, he'll talk about demand, uh, so I'm not going to touch on that right now. But we also, um, you know, so we handled the parking problem, we handled the traffic problem. Uh, you know, so what we're trying to say is that we're here to listen, and there are things that we can do to make the property better and also satisfy and assuage some of the fears of the community, uh, we're here to do it. Um, you know, we can't just, you know, wipe out and just make it a small little entity, because then the whole economic, I said vitality and synergistic symbiotic relationship of this whole plan, it doesn't work. Um, there won't be money there, and if that happens, there won't be an Oral School, there's no Pratt Building, there's no parking garage, there's no new roads, there's, you know, it's just, it just doesn't, the economics is not there to support it and to support the businesses that are there. Um, but a lot of the other issues of what we did in our outreach, um, and homeowners, uh, we tried to address. Um, there was also, when we were at the meeting, there was talk, and they wanted to see, there's a home right over here, if you can see it, right on, on Boulder Court, there's one of the homes that are way up on the hill that are not way, you know, deeper down Boulder, but actually maybe only fifteen, twenty feet below Oral School Road. There was concern that how that building is going to look, that our first building over here is going to look to that home that's approximately over here. So what we did is, we created a uh cross-section. Um, we, we worked on it, we got the actual elevations that it will look like. This is that home, and this is that first residential building that I showed you. And basically, that's a one-story home, so uh when they look out from the windows, this is what they're going to see. Um, can they see the building? Um, yeah, but it'll be really tough through all these trees. And if they really want, we could put a fence up here, which will block it out completely, I just think it's nicer to use, you know, natural vegetation in order to, to block it. But this, this is the view, I think, one of the members of the committee wanted to see this, and how this interrelates uh to that one home that's much higher up on Boulder Court. Um, a lot of the others, you know, we, we were asked to do some sort of cross-sections and, you know, what we can say is that, you know, a lot of the buildings that, what we can say is that nothing's going to overpower the Oral School. The Oral School is the main theme of this, it's the Main Street USA. All the other buildings are going to complement it, uh, but we don't have accurate, um, you know, we have the survey ready, but we don't have accurate information as to exactly the heights, how the, these buildings are going to be set and the relationship to the Oral School. So I don't want to mislead the commission or the public um with that at this time. But this is the kind of, you know, path that, that we're taking in order to alleviate some of the fears of local residents so that they shouldn't be seeing um our project. Um, and with that, I can turn it over to Ray, he has a couple of other uh pictures that we tried to do, and again, they're representative, they're not accurate a hundred percent. And I'll also talk about the schools and I'll also talk about the demand, because, you know, it doesn't work the community if, like some of the residents said, how do we know what, what the demand is here? What I can tell you is if you've been following the community, um, there's a building called, um, that just went up. It got opened up beginning of this year before COVID, was Harbor Heights, there were a hundred and ninety units. Um, they are completely rented out. Um, we had RPRG reports that were done, and Ray will talk more about it. Um, and right now, because of the man that's going on the neighborhood, even during COVID and without EB growing, uh, they're not going to grow until the end of two thousand twenty-one. They're talking about one-bedroom apartments in Harbor, because people are fighting for them, right now listed at twenty-two hundred dollars a month, which is way above market. Um, they have uh two bedrooms at thirty-seven hundred dollars a month. Um, obviously, when we, when we work on, you know, when we build our community, we're going to bring it back down to a little bit more of a normal range, which is really important for the local, because they, you know, if they get priced out of the market, then they, you know, no one can afford to live here. Um, which is another, so the people are saying that, you know, there's not enough demand. Um, most of the reports show that there's, there's too few luxury housing projects in Southeastern Connecticut. With that, though, I'm going to turn on, you know, I said Ray is, besides being my right hand, uh, he's also a real estate financial uh economist, and uh he will take over and, and talk about some of the other issues that are concerned to the public. Ray?
Yeah, you need to un-share your screen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Can I do it?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, no, you're still there. Okay, can people see?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so, one of the things that, uh, based on the tour, uh, people were wondering about was uh the situation with regard to the parking garage with an apartment building on top of that. One of the unique uh advantages of moving the parking garage from its original location to its new location between the Oral School and the Pratt Building is there's a significant change in topography. And that topography change allows for the parking garage to sit much lower than uh the Oral School building itself. And um, and then the, the apartments will sit on top of that. So by way of reference, one of the ways to think about this, if you if you were to look up there and look at the Pratt Building, try and find where the Pratt Building was, most of the time, most, even this time of the year, it's very tough to see. You can see the, uh, the, the superstructure, the, the, the air handling equipment on top of the Pratt Building. For example, uh, if you're driving down I ninety-five, um, but you can't see the Pratt Building itself. Uh, so one of the things we did is we had somebody geolocate uh the parking garage and the, the apartment building on top of it so that we, and superimpose that in a photo, in photographs. So if you were looking, somebody mentioned earlier, if you're looking for Mystic, uh, what is it going to look like? What is the, what is, you know, what are you going to be able to see? Well, here's an example. So if we, if you look here where the blue arrow is, there is the apartment building, and, you know, there's a, a, a photograph of it uh superimposed. Uh, but because of the distance, it's, you, you're virtually not going to see the parking garage, you may see the top, uh, the top of the top floor, and you will see uh the apartment building. But given it's, um, uh, you know, given this, how far away it is, it's going to be very difficult to see. Um, then another member on the walk asked, well, what's going to happen when we see, uh, when you're driving I ninety-five southbound? And you round that corner and are coming up to exit ninety and going down that slight incline? Well, here's another example, you will see, uh, you can see the top of the building itself, the, the apartment building, the garage is almost going to be invisible even at this time of the year. Um, I have a map, uh, photographs are embedded with uh coordinates. So if you look on the map on the side there, you can see where these photographs were taken. So this one is taken as you approach exit ninety going down the hill. Um, and the other one, uh, hold on here. Um, uh, not there. Uh, the other one, you can see the location, uh, it's taken at the dock. Uh, uh, that's uh at the south end of uh Mystic Seaport. Um, once you, I tried to get pictures uh that the, the uh firm could use to geolocate from downtown Mystic, really tough to do, because it was so far away. Um, but this gives you a good representation of what, what can be seen. Um, now, uh, today, um, actually, these pictures were taken last weekend, you can see where they were taken from. You know, somebody was wondering, well, what, uh, you know, what's the, what can you see from I ninety-five right below uh the property? Um, if you look up, uh, one of the things with pictures is, you know, you don't, you don't really get a sense of how steep that slope is there, that's actually a pretty steep slope. If you look at the top here, though, you can see those three evergreen trees. Those three evergreen trees are uh at the, uh, basically at the uh east end of the Oral School, behind the Rainbow House, there's a little knoll there. Uh, that gives you an indication of uh the height, but notice from I ninety-five low, you can't see up there. Now, when the garage is built and there's a building on top of it, uh, an apartment building on top of it, the top of the apartment building, you'll be able to see. Um, let's see here, here's another one taken a little before, uh, you can see the river down below, so this is further back. Um, can't, you know, can't see anything there. And uh this one's even taken, uh, oh, I know, I climbed over the, the guardrail, went down, went down the bank a little bit to try and uh capture this picture. Um, you can see this, the, the, you know, very tough to see a- at the top of the hill. Um, let's see here. Uh, the other questions uh that people had with regard to uh school-aged children. Uh, we went out and we did a, uh, we did a survey. Um, I, I actually hu- uh, had a firm do this for us. Um, CoStar, I don't know if you're, any of you are familiar with CoStar, they're a real estate uh data aggregation firm, and they have their, uh, they keep lots of data up to date on what's happening in uh not only multifamily but office and industrial space. Um, so, uh, uh, when, so I took a look at what they had in Harbor Heights, which is over in Stonington, about at, like, what, as the crow flies, it's only three-quarters of a mile away. Uh, traffic wa- you know, driving, it's maybe two miles away. Uh, they currently have three vacancies, that's the project that came online earlier this spring. Um, they have uh, uh, two bedrooms. Um, hold on here. Somebody's sending me a um, so they have a, a one-bedroom available. Um, actually, they have two, two, two one-bedrooms available, one's for eighteen hundred and fifteen dollars, the other's twenty-two eighty-one. Um, and they have a one, uh, they have one two-bedroom available, and that's thirty-seven hundred and ten dollars. They have their six two-late, six school-aged children and seven toddlers at Harbor Heights. Uh, Saybrook Station, another project that's actually over in Old Saybrook, but it is a competitor, because it's a, it's a brand-new building, it's a Class B building, it's not Class A like ours. But people are driving to Old Saybrook for quality housing uh to take advantage of new semi-luxury apartments. Uh, there, they have a hundred and sixty units, right now, two vacancies, they have seven uh, uh, school-aged children, four toddlers. And then in East Line, uh, the gateway at And then in East Line, the gateway at Sound View, which is behind the Costco along I-95, much larger project. They have nine school age children and 14 toddlers there and they there, they also have a about 20. I think it's, I can't remember how many townhouses offhand, but they have a number of townhouses. Two bedroom townhouses with garages that they rent. It's a total of almost 250 units. This particular project is designed specifically to attract a workforce that EB, Pfizer, Orsted, and a number of the suppliers for EB. And they're looking, they, the issue that they have is recruiting the workforce that they need. They they have people come into town and unless they know of the ledges, excuse me, not the ledges. If they know of Harbor Heights, right now they're when they go out and look for a place to live, they're looking at a product that is for the most part built prior to 1994. The ledges was built in 1994. It is, it is now undergoing an upgrade. However, that is the newest product available in Groton. And it's EB finds it challenging. We have, we have direct communications with executives at EB. And they find it particularly challenging to try and recruit a workforce when the folks go out and look at the housing. And then the second problem that EB has has said to us is we would love it if we could have these folks come and stay for longer than 30 months, 36 months. If we can get an extra year out of them, that would be wonderful. It would save us a lot of energy and time. And the product that we have and the way this particular project is being designed is to attract and be attractive specifically to the Gen Z's, millennials and one of the things we're finding is there's a significant population of empty nesters that are looking for a place to live in southeastern Connecticut, where they don't have to do a lot of maintenance and whatnot. And, you know, Harbor Heights is an example of that. They have about 40% of the folks that live there are empty nesters. And they lease that place up in what eight months, nine months, something like that. So with that, I'm willing to ask any questions, you know, answer any questions that you may have.
So this is John for one second. I also just want to kind of re put this in context of, you know, we're looking at this master plan, thinking about the zoning that the commission is working on right now in the context of that. So, you know, as we're thinking about the zoning, just what are the things that came up, you know, in this this presentation of the master plan? One other quick comment I want to make, I see some hands are being raised by the public. The right time to ask questions is prior to the meeting or if people have comments, questions, concerns. If you forward or send an email off to Deb Jones, Dave Gronk or myself, we will make sure the commission gets that in their correspondence. And again, I know on Jeff and Ray's webpage, I think there's a section there to post some comments to them or questions if you have some specifically for the developer.
I I will make one other comment. EB has made some public announcements with regard to the number of people that they need to hire over the next eight to 10 years. A significant portion of those are replacement of retiring workers. However, EB has shared with us what they think the growth in the workforce is going to be just through 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 the end of 2022. They expect to grow the workforce, expand the workforce at the Groton facility by somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,000 workers. And at the Quads of Point facility, somewhere around 2,000 workers. And people evidently, there's a significant portion from what they're telling us that they move from, they may be working at Quads of Point for a period of time and then they go to Groton and they they move back and forth. So it then and I'm only, that's only EB. Orsted has made public announcements that how many people they're going to hire. You know, 1,700, you know, technical, good paying jobs over in New London. This particular project will be, it it's designed to be a class A luxury apartment and apartment community. And it's what the Gen Z's and millennials and even the empty nesters are, that's what they're looking for. This was not, you know, the, the, the economics and the and the demographics serve to inform the design of this project. I see Mr. Who Deck has a question.
Yeah, it's, I did have one question regarding that height that you're looking at right now.
Yes.
How tall a building is going on top of that?
So the, 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 the parking garage, you can see just a little bit of gray there. So the gray, the parking garage is a little bit higher than the Pratt Building. But it, because of the trees, it gets shielded to some degree and that building itself there is about 40 feet approximately.
Right. It's around with with between the floors, around 11, 10.7 to 11 foot of floor.
Portion represents the the apartment building?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Also, just issue architecturally, you know, we just stuck a brown blob in there. It's not going to look like that. And the, the, the effect, it will, it will blend more into the surroundings.
Understood. And that that top represents the roof line?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Um, two other questions, if you, if you don't mind. So from the previous property size, the original property size to what it is now, just how many units are involved?
From the original RFP, we were between 800, 850 units. This is showing 931 units.
And that's all the new buildings?
Well, the buildings were really moved around. What was new is on the Ferguleski property, which I failed to mention. You know, Pfizer and some others also looking for executive housing. There's no quality executive housing out there. We built on that property, it's more less dense as was told. And we're building on there 51 townhomes and 10 duplexes to handle any kind of executive housing issue, you know, needs of the community in that area. So that that's a total of 71 units.
And then the last question I got is rental versus owned. You mentioned rental units, but then you also mentioned owning. Are these?
So I I didn't mention owning. We don't, we're not contemplating that right now.
Executive housing will be rented?
Will be rented. Yeah, they, they have a Pfizer especially. I think right now, Ray, we're, they're renting somewhere right now around 20. They're very unhappy.
Both EB and Pfizer have stated that the, that the people that they bring in at the executive level and or the senior researchers they bring in, they have to travel great distances to find the housing that's suitable for them. And and EB specifically said that they have people, they're sending people over to Old Saybrook to Saybrook Station. And they don't particularly like it because that property is right next to the railroad tracks. It's a nice property, but it's noisy. And it's surrounded by parking shopping centers. It's not, it's an, it's in an infill location. It just happens to be a superior product, which, you know, so people are willing to put up with a location to have a nicer apartment than what's available locally.
All right. Thank you.
I had a question or actually two questions. What's the definition of a class A apartment?
That's a very good question. So I'll start with class C and then I'll go up because that'll help to inform you in other ways. So class C is typically a building that is 20 years or older. It doesn't utilize the latest technology. Class C typically is a much smaller apartment. Uses, you know, the designs of the buildings are such that you immediately know what a class C building is. You have lots of them in in Groton. Class B is 20 years or newer. Main does not have the latest technology and has limited amenities. Class A uses superior fit and finish, superior appliances. The interiors are very well done. The exteriors, you know, there, there's multi, multi faceted facades. They're architecturally stimulating. And then most importantly, the the utility and the function is very contemporary. So, you know, typically they rent 30% more than a class B or class B plus. So give you an example, the ledges, I, you know, in in our industry and in my role as a professor and researcher, the ledges would be a class B property. The new owners are going to upgrade it. It'll become a class B plus. But they're hampered by the location and they're hampered by the lack of amenities. They have a very small clubhouse down up front, for instance. They have an outdoor pool, no indoor pool, very small workout facility and no other amenities available. And it's also outdoor parking. For the most part, it's outdoor parking. Here you have indoor parking protected underneath the buildings. You have all the amenities on the site. The location is superior. You know, that's the other thing about this particular piece of property. It's a very unique piece of property. And it, its location, its proximity to I-95 and being somewhat isolated. It's a, it's a very unique property and it, it, you know, it deserves to have a, you know, very high class development on there to take advantage of what's what's available.
When you talk about EB's growth and employment, they really have two types of of people, tradespeople that work in the, in the shipyard. And then you have technical engineering types that
Right.
design or support.
Yep.
Did you factor that in? How many people are going to be in, say, the type you're looking for, probably more of the technical?
You bring up a very interesting point. You're correct that the tradespeople are probably not are.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, they're, they're not, although they make very good money and they could double up and rent one of these apartments, a two bedroom apartment. For the most part, this is specifically designed for the educated, you know, the, the, both undergrad and master's degree. And EB has a real problem because they, 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 they have an ongoing recruitment effort. And those folks come in, they stay for 20, you know, 24 months, 36 months, and then they leave. They're just putting a stamp on their resume. Oh, I worked for EB, a Fortune 500 company. I was in the engineering group. And it's a way for them to enhance their resume and they're not interested in staying for the long term. And this, this kind of product here is what is designed to be attractive to them. And then EB, or, you know, they'll tell you, they use the term general dynamics, they rotate people from around the country in and out. And that's one of the issues they have is when they rotate somebody in, where do they put them? Where can they stay? Because they're only going to be there a year or two years. And this is designed to designed to be attractive to those and help EB recruit those people and keep them. You know, we're being told by EB that they, they have work, they're going to be running full tilt for the next 20 years plus with the, the nine Virginia class and whatever ultimately the Columbia class is. I just, I noticed the other yesterday. Congress overrode President Trump's veto of the defense spending bill, which in that has the funding for the seven additional Columbia class. You know, they got the order for two and evidently they're going to get seven more.
It was only the House, I thought, that voted.
You're, you're correct. The House voted. You're correct.
Well, you got to have the Senate too.
Yeah. But they, but, but even in the Senate, two thirds voted, more than two thirds voted for the bill.
If they don't change their minds.
Yeah. There's too much money at stake.
All right. Does anyone else, any of the other commissioners have any questions or?
So I, I will offer one other, oh, one other point. Jeff alluded to this. So in the course of us working with the bank for the construction financing, you know, it's an investment bank, they hired, they had us hire a firm out of Washington DC to do an independent demand study, supply and demand study. We can't make that public, but we can say with absolute, you know, the investment bank was very pleased with what they came back with. And, and, you know, saw the demand and currently and in the future. They tend to be very conservative.
Most banks are.
Yeah. Yeah. Michael?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
All right. So I have a lot of questions and maybe some of them are too far out in the weeds to deal with. But I would like to see the questions that were raised by Representative Whitney Faith Richardson in particular, addressed at some point in the near future. I'm concerned about the impacts on the community and on the infrastructure in the town. We've, as a planning commission, we've worked really hard trying to get connectivity to downtown. We still don't have that. If this project goes in, how is it going to impact the sidewalks that don't connect to downtown? And some of them are insufficient as it is. They're not, you know, there's some of them are asphalt, some of them are different materials. And then the this, the building height has come up from a number of different residents and other people. I'd like to see, we've seen a lot of drawings that are from the plan view from the top. But I would like to see more drawings that actually show these buildings heights in relationship to things that are real. There was one drawing there that Jeff showed us of the trees, but it looked as if those trees were 40 feet tall. So I want to make sure that when we do have drawings like that, that they are actual or or more representative. I know he did say that they weren't supposed to be representative, but if it isn't going to even be close, then I would rather not see it. So I want, I want to make sure that those impacts, the neighborhood and the impacts that are beyond this community are at least, you know, there, there's got to be that communication. It's several people noted that questions have been asked and they haven't gotten, they haven't heard back. So I would like that to, you know, to be done. And then I do have a lot of questions. Maybe I'll submit them to staff. Or as we proceed, we can go a little further into the weeds, like I said. Thank you.
Any of the other commissioners have any comments, questions? Because tonight I was assuming we're just going to get a presentation and not actually take any actions.
I have a question. Just as you said, this is just a presentation that we don't want to get too much into the weeds. So I just wonder if we can cover something that wasn't covered, which is some of the, the things that aren't showing in the presentation, such as if this is tremendously EB and Pfizer centric. What discussion has there been about not adding 1,000 cars between this location and Pfizer? If you know that's where they're going, then has either of you two been talking about having shuttle service?
The, the answer is yes, and EB is interested in that. As a matter of fact, EB has a tremendous parking problem, as you know. They don't want more cars to go down there. So they're, they're quite interested in in setting up some sort of a shuttle service from the community if there's some sort of a critical mass for them to, you know, be able to afford to send up shuttle vans every half hour or so or 15 minutes in the morning and the afternoons. But they were very receptive to that and more so because they have the need. They don't have the parking ability to, for people to park.
I agree. I just wonder if, other than being interested, there was a plan for doing it.
Well, I, I think at this point in time, what we keep hearing is that, well, you don't have anything concrete to offer us. So it's, it's tough for us to commit to you of, you know, what we're going to do for you. Their answer is, is that this is not something that they would be doing for us. It's something that they need. So it's, it's more. Their answer is, is that this is not something that they would be doing for us. It's something that they need. So it's, it's more on their radar. But, you know, they have not done it up until now because most of the buildings where they, they have, I guess, employees are not local, first of all, and the few that are aren't too many in each building.
EB does have a van trans service right now. And they also have a bus that runs between facilities.
Right, but that wouldn't, that kind of wouldn't handle this at all. Because that's, between the facilities is an all-day-long sort of thing that's needed to happen. This is a whole different scale of within, you know, in two shifts of work. Well, it's not the engineers, so it's one shift of work. I got five hundred people who need to make the trip within a half an hour. So it's not little shuttle service, it's a major thing. And somebody's going to be doing the driving. So usually with the cases, the bus is only part of the cost. It's having the driver is a chunk of the cost too, is kind of a service.
Yeah, it would be more suited to the van trans.
I think it's, quite honestly, I think it's something that technology will take over easily within our lifetime to have the driverless vehicles happen, but I would say that, but then that needs to be part of the plan because if we're going to say the traffic's not going to be bad, that's nonsense. The traffic will be horrendous. Unless we get those people out of their cars. And if we know where they're going, then we should have a plan that gets them out of their cars. So, so there really isn't anything yet, and it would like to be nice to see that. For off-site improvements. I know that the, the intersection at the end of Oral School in Cow Hill, you're talking about adding left-hand turn lanes. Is there any sketches of that kind of happening? And besides that, I, I guess not, or else you probably would have shown them to us. But I think we would need to see that. The other part is then what happens at if a hundred percent of those cars are headed to the highway? That intersection right now is the worst in the area. It's horrendous. It's, it's beyond capacity now, and we don't particularly want to see a traffic light there because that'll backlight, back traffic up, up onto the highway. We need to just have the road taken care of in some other way. Is there any discussion, at least discussion at this point? Because I think there needs to be something done about those highway interface right now. It isn't any good.
I do know that there was preliminary traffic studies done to show the impact of the I ninety-five exit to the complex. You got to, you got to remember though, you know, we don't have this project fully, you know, designed because, you know, we, we, we don't even have the right to design it yet. So we did do a lot of the preliminary studies to make sure that the traffic could be handled or how it could be handled. And we can get that to you. We, we didn't bring, tonight was just an introduction. So we don't have any of the engineers here. The architects here to get into detail and weeds, but I could assure you though, that we have addressed it.
Well, I, I think the addressing comes out to Cow Hill or, that's Mystic Street right there, certainly has the capacity. It's a nice big wide road. It's got big shoulders. Certainly could handle another thousand cars, I'm sure. But a hundred percent of those cars that are coming from your facility will be heading south and then turning left at one of two locations.
Going to the.
Going, from it, going in the morning, they're going to turn left, either go northbound or go left to go southbound. And coming back, a hundred percent of them will be coming, well, fifty percent or seventy-five percent will be coming back off from EB and Pfizer and turning left again, and it's already a nightmare for those people to turn left. Capacity is not the issue of the road. The problem is the capacity of the interchange. And I don't think that's been addressed. So I would say that, that's something you need to address. I don't think we can just leave it the way it is and put a traffic light there and say, now we're good, we're left turn lane. I think it would have to be something else.
Yeah. Well, yeah, right now we're just talking about the master plan, not site plans.
Can I jump in here really quick? One of the main points to, to show you this master plan is that so you can visualize what might happen out here based on the regulations that you are developing. So if you have concerns about certain aspects here, I mean, you are in the driver's seat, you are developing these regulations. So, so that's what we were hoping you would see from this, this presentation. Some, you know, some things that might cause you concern, some things that you like, and that you would incorporate that into the regulations that you're working on right now.
Which would be building height, density, those type of questions.
Exactly, exactly. And you can, you know, if you have off-site improvements that you think are appropriate, you can build that into the regulations. If you have height concerns, you can build that into the regulations. If you want a future developer to show you that something is not going to impact a neighborhood, you know, you can, you can develop standards and put that in there for them to show.
And again, I think they're stressing that that should be in the regulations. And then once, you know, the regulations are adopted, then when a master plan comes in, they'll have to meet all those. So, you know, I think there is a bit of a chicken and egg going on here now with, we'd like more information from the developers, but they haven't created a lot of that to the level that, you know, we'd all love to see, but they haven't done it because the regulations don't even exist. So if they start designing a plan and doing more traffic analysis based on something that our regulations don't even allow yet, that's a big risk and it's a lot of, a lot of resources for them out. So I think as all these issues come up, let's make sure they're in the regulations. But then we have the ability to make sure we can get that. And if it's not part of the master plan, well then you can demand it's part of the master plan or part of the site plan or whatever phase that, you know, we need that level of information at.
One, one of the things that has to be addressed, I think, for the regulation, to have the regulations work is phasing. I don't believe something like this would all be completed at one time. And it would be nice to know how it's phased and how it's going to be controlled. I assume that the developer would want to build certain, a certain amount of the buildings or and then start getting people to live in that and rent the buildings and then continue on to a complete development. Or we would just have to have an update to the master plan as we move along. But I don't see a problem with that, just that we ought to have some feel for how that would work.
Correct. It is going to be phased, by the way. There's going to be a site plan per phase.
Well, is there any, is, do you have enough knowledge right now to identify what would happen in, say, the first phase? Or is that?
Yes. The first phase, we're, we're working with the bank, so it's a little bit, but it'll be a maximum of three hundred and thirty-two units. Minimum of two hundred and seventy-two. And it would be the first, you know, without going too far into it, it would be, it would be this block in here. And this would be the buildings, I remember I said, two seven, three seventy-two, so we would like to create the street. So we would like to include these two plus this block in here. Phase one.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Does the developer have any more information they want to bring forth?
Answer, you know, any questions that related to this plan?
Does anyone else have any other, are there any other questions? The staff have anything else to add? If not, I guess we can adjourn the meeting.
Just, thank you everybody for your time tonight. If any commission members have any questions that they want to forward on to, you know, Deb Page or myself, I think Michael Kane said he had some he was going to forward to us. If there are things that you're thinking about, please forward those on and we can discuss, you know, at the next meeting that we have on this topic, talking about the zoning. After the last meeting, we, when we went over the zoning, we thought it was important to show the vision and the context for the site before we went any further with the zoning. So I think now we're in a good spot to bring the zoning back to you and have that conversation. Now that you have a little bit of a handle on this, and if we need to go back and, and look at things or have a discussion, we could always do that.
And along those same lines, if anyone who is attending, who's a member of the public, have any questions? Feel free to reach out to staff. We can, we can direct you to the right spot. I can see a couple of hands raised and we're beyond the public participation portion of the agenda. So please reach out to us.
All right. So if no one else has any, anything to add, then I'll make a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
I, I would second that.
Moved in second. You had a question? No, okay. All right, so. I assume we have a majority on, on the motion. So adjourn then the meeting, seven forty-two PM. By my computer.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.